I'll call this meeting of the practice select board to order.
Everyone, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. All right. Review and approve the agenda. Any additions to the agenda?
Just a question.
Yes, Albert.
Under, you know, item six, C, town warning, review and edits, you know, we're just reviewing it. And after it is ARPA fund allocations. Might we do ARPA fund allocations that impact the two articles on that warning? The one concerning the highway budget and the town municipal budget? I don't know if we should have the ARPA discussion before we look at the warning. In the event that we may change Article three and Article four of the warning.
So you're making a motion. We just flip them?
Yes. Well, you know, if it would make sense to, you know.
Well, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, whatever we're putting in from ARPA is not going to change those two numbers. It's just going to be in addition to, so we're putting them in there, but we're not changing the tax rate. So those budgeted numbers will stay the same. Am I right or am I wrong?
You're right, partially unless
And wrong.
Unless you want to allocate some of the ARPA funds into the general fund for wages. Then it would impact that article.
So we should flip it?
And then too, I was thinking about, you know, the information we got from the Vermont Lega cities and towns. They were saying if we wanted to create a new fund, a reserve fund to put the money in, there may have to be an article warned, you know, to create that account.
That would be at next town meeting, wouldn't it? Because it would be a surplus.
Yeah.
So that's next town meeting.
And that was the purpose of the, you know, to sign a resolution if we do put it into wages.
So we'll just flip C and D.
Could I amend the agenda? I'd like to discuss Zion and their
Want to do that under water commissioners?
Wherever you think it would fit in, rather.
I think that's probably the best place to do it. After budget, before other business. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Review and approve the minutes from the December 26 regular select board meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Open public comments.
Do we have anybody on duty?
Okay. Good stuff.
All right, guys did a good job plowing.
This is good.
Tipped up with it.
Excellent.
I know coming down Business Four to the stoplight at Route Three there and pick up a truck and then he was a good guy. Instead of slamming on the brakes and rear-ending people, he got off and went over and he went up over one of the islands.
Oh.
Then he got turned a little bit, then he hit the center island and that shot him towards Proctor, but I dare say he's going to have a little front-end damage there. But he did good. He didn't hit anybody.
I went into Pittsburgh on Sunday afternoon and East Street was great, South Street was straight. Route Three was a little rough until I got to Pittsburgh and it was beautiful.
Route Three was terrible, going into West Rutland.
So, nice job to the town group.
At least the towns take care of their roads.
Sidewalks are nice today also.
Yes, they were. Yeah. My kids are always the first to let me know when the sidewalks aren't. All right. Any other good stuff? All right, moving on to, does everybody approve the bills and sign the orders?
Yes.
All right. Joint Police Department with neighboring towns.
That would be you.
Yes.
Right. I gave you the spreadsheet in your packets that kind of do a breakdown of your one through five and what the cost allocations look like. So they're here to answer any questions you may have as far as, I guess, benefits to us. You know what the whole thing looks like in terms of if we go in with Pittsburgh and West Rutland?
Is the chief and the force in favor of this?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then when they say joint venture, is that meaning we're just going to contract with Pittsburgh? Or we would have some other input in?
So I believe when this was first discussed that, I came to see Judy a few weeks back, about forty-hour per week coverage that would be contracted.
Okay, it's a contract, yes. That's a problem.
So similar thing we've been talking with West Rutland too and that's how we came up with the five-year plan and the vehicle allowance for, you know, we have to have a new cruiser for each town basically so we have coverage, which is all broken out. The only thing that doesn't show in here is vehicle repairs. So if we buy new vehicles, we've got warranty for three years. So there, you know, if there's repair costs in the fourth and fifth, we'd want to see that covered as well.
Now, how would you figure that out? Would you, like, say, say you have five cruisers and one breaks down? Is that divvied up between the three towns or is that? Say that cruiser's assigned to Proctor, then it's Proctor's expense.
For the most part, we would assign a car to Proctor.
Okay.
Okay, but in the event that something, let's say it won't start, then the guy could grab, or girl could grab another car and come over here. Those are all identical, pretty much.
And that's another thing, the cruisers will all be marked Pittsburgh?
And that's because I want people in the public to know who to call if they had a problem. Okay? But it's kind of like our billboard. So if somebody around the neighborhood somebody has a problem, they can call into my office and we can deal with that. Instead of going through you folks
Yeah.
and, you know, going that, that's our, that's our.
With the dispatch changes coming, what do you plan for that?
Well, I don't see that, there's a lot of talk about dispatch changes,
Yeah.
but there hasn't been many discussions recently. So that would be something that we'd have to revisit if they decided to change it. But they're doing less and less and we're doing more. You know, we, the officers, are doing more and more on the road. So I haven't heard any conversation or buzz about that. I'm going to say almost a year.
Good. As far as scheduling goes, would it be, would there be an officer assigned to Proctor like there would be a cruiser assigned to Proctor? So it would be the same person whenever possible?
Yeah, morning, vacation, sick time, yes. That's how I'd like to do it. And I'd also like to set it up so that you as a select board and Judy as a town manager can set the schedule a month in advance. If you want, if you know something special's coming and you want him or her at this particular time, I would get a schedule from you monthly and that way you know when and where they're working.
Say it's two o'clock in the morning and you don't have any officers on me, it would go to the state police.
They're very, they're very kind about calling me up.
Oh, okay.
They're very kind about calling me up.
So would that individual also be considered, like right now, the sheriff is our animal officer?
I would like to view the animal problem. We have an animal control well, an animal control officer. Who I spoke to was willing to come over here and work with animal problem. We have a dedicated person, but not saying that if it's a barking dog, say for instance, that the officer couldn't go up to the door and talk to the owners of the dog and at least start them all rolling.
Good. That's nice.
We don't have too many dog issues. I mean, we did for a while. It was sporadic.
They come and go.
Yeah, it comes in bunches, yeah. You probably know, but we don't bus our kids. Our kids walk, so.
That would be one of our top priorities.
Yeah.
But again, I would let the select board and the town manager set the schedule.
Yes.
Okay?
Fine. Yeah. Yeah, we know we don't need every day holding their hands, but
Right.
I remember one time, summertime, well, it wasn't summertime, but school was still on, but I came across a bridge and the sheriff stopped, jumped out of his car, stopped everybody, had a few little kids cross the street, you know. Everybody was pretty happy.
Well, that's the way I should be.
Yes, exactly.
Otherwise, you're hurried.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Can't think of anything right now.
We currently get monthly reports of activity.
We should get monthly reports as I do our town now. Give it to West Rutland and break out for you folks.
If West Rutland doesn't join, is that a deal breaker?
I, you know, to me it makes sense, you know. We all have some Omea truck issues, you know.
We're still all.
Yeah, thank you. We, you know, we all border each other, so, you know, big loop here. Do you do, what other towns do you do?
We do Kitten and then we're contracted with Omea for the truck detail.
Good.
I just have a question, a budget question regarding the retirement. Are these, are they on, are you on Beamers?
Mm-hmm.
Are they on Beamers? Are they on the
They were on Beamers.
Okay. And is that saying that you contribute 3% to there?
Well, that's what the town does now, so it's a, so that would just be part of.
All right. Yeah, I didn't know, because I know we do more for our employees, so.
That would be up to you guys.
One per.
I'm sure no one would say no if you wanted to do that. So I just have a question. How, how do you feel about a five-year contract?
What, what increase would you be looking for yearly roughly?
So we kind of broke it out here with salary increase, you know, the cost of living and, you know, annual salary. You know, the vehicle that, kind of worked this out when I talked to West Rutland to break up, you know, a cruiser cost within the first four years, or five years actually, five. And that would really be it. And then, you know, if we have to revisit something, we will, but I don't really see anything. The one thing we were discussing was if there was an overtime issue or there was a call-in after, you know, like we were talking like fifty dollars an hour would be the rate, like if they had to come in after. You never know. Obviously, if there was a need for more than one officer, you know, that would we'd certainly try to make that happen if we had an emergency situation.
That would depend on the time of day.
Yeah.
You know, if it's, if there's somebody on Pittsburgh, Kitten or West Rutland that are just in mutual aid, we'd go over. After the fact, we're going to try to coordinate the schedules so that there's two or three people in the town to help provide our backup for ourselves.
So like now when the sheriff's off duty, it's usually the state police that come. We wouldn't rely on them as much then? We'd rely on any backup you had first?
I think they would, I think they would want that, that we rely on ourselves as much as we could.
So I think the only impact, like if we didn't do a five-year contract, it's going to cost us more upfront, because if we did a three-year, the lease payment's going to be higher.
Yeah, our, our reasoning for looking at something long-term was we wouldn't want to put all this money in our, you know, buying cruisers and everything and find out a year later, like, yeah, we don't want to do this anymore. So, you know, it's more of a commitment that we're not holding the bag on anything.
Right. Well, plus I think it helps with the retention of the officers too.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But you're fairly confident with these numbers that this is what, would be what we'd be looking at?
Yep. The only thing, like I said, would be whatever car expenses would go for, you know, after that, that, so.
Maybe after the third year?
Pretty much. Yeah, I mean, everything should be under warranty for three years.
And you don't see a problem getting additional officers?
I don't think so.
Isn't that gas? That's covered under vehicle allowance?
Not really.
Okay, yeah. That would be a separate item then?
Yeah, we, these are things we could certainly fine-tune in a contract. You know, if, like, we wanted to give them a gas card for Proctor or whatever, we could figure that out too.
And then as far as personal protective equipment, whether it's a vest or, you know, their weapons, that's not provided by
We'll get that included.
by the police department.
Yeah.
Your, your liability insurance, I don't see anything.
Work with the lead.
Yep. Yep.
I'm sure that we would want to come up with some type of memorandum on when our officers and Proctor. The only thing I'm thinking of is if there ends up being a lawsuit issue or something.
Exactly.
You know, hold harmless with Pittsburgh and, you know, the liability. So we could talk to the lead on that too, to really fine-tune that. Judy and I know a couple of people.
Yeah.
Good.
I think it's worth some
I think we should look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And don't hesitate to give me a call either to office and we can hear some answers on things too.
This is, chief, this is a really silly question, but could we, could you send us a copy of, like, your next report that you're giving to your Pittsburgh select board? Just so we can see what it looks like?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can send you, I just handed it for December, beginning of January.
That'd be great, just so we could take a look.
It basically covers what we calls in tickets and revenue and everything, yeah.
That's what the sheriff gives us.
That'd be nice to see. Thank you.
This, you know, what they did on that day and, yeah.
Yeah. I don't have it broken down by day. I have it broken down by month. Okay? I mean, you know, I didn't, this officer didn't do this on Monday. I mean, this is, come to the monthly stats, if that's okay.
Just so we could take a look?
Yeah.
Always something that, sometimes it's hard to read or it's just, it'd be nice to see.
I'll have, and get that over here tomorrow.
Great, thank you. So is it, consensus of the board to move forward with taking a look at this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, certainly. Don't want to miss an opportunity to
neighboring towns, we have so much in common, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Give a call if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love Tennessee.
Thanks. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Thank you.
Okay, under the amended agenda, the next item is the ARPA funds allocation. Need to assign them to specific departments, accounts, and sign the resolution.
I know in the last meeting we talked about, you know, adding more money to the highway fund for paving and allocating there, but even after that and then adding money to the water and sewer for bump-ups for salaries so it doesn't impact any rates or anything, we're still left with like $350,000. And I just don't want it to, I want to make sure we allocate to things we need or that are definitely going to happen, you know, so that we don't lose the money and, you know, and I think the areas that are big-ticket items is a good place to put it just because that costs, you know, that makes the tax rate go up. We know those things, those needs are there and they're always going to be there. And they're big-ticket items, so when it comes time to replace something or, you know, pave a road or do something, that cost is more exuberant than anything else. The other thing is that, once it's allocated, like into, say, when we did salaries or something like that, then, as I mentioned before, it does become part of, it's ARPA, but we don't, we don't flag it as ARPA funds any longer. We flag it as part of the general fund. But then if there is excess left, then it can be a surplus and then it can go into reserves. We can't just create a reserve for the money we don't know what to do with. So I just kind of wanted to bring to you guys to brainstorm to see if there's anything else, you know.
One thing I would, I'd like the board to consider is digitizing the town clerk's records down there, all the land records, all, you know. We, we have talked about this in the past and we've never done it.
Yeah, they said that they, someone came in, I guess, and started to do, like, look at it and stuff and that it's very costly venture to do that.
Yeah. But I mean, we, you know, most towns are switching over to
Right.
And these ARPA funds would seem like, just a thought.
You'd be worth trying going out and getting a, you know.
I'm sure
RFP or
Yeah.
Yeah. Here's my question, because this is, I think how I'm understanding this. If we put, besides the highway fund and besides the bump-ups for the water and sewer, if we allocate the rest of the funds to salaries, then that'll give us the equivalent amount of a surplus at the end of the year, which we can then put into a reserve fund for stuff like digitizing the town records or equipment for the towns
Yes.
or whatever it needs to be.
Great.
Is that how I'm understanding it?
Yeah, I believe so for that, for salary pieces of it.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, you could put it into highway paving and if it wasn't used next year, you could also use that because we have the reserve fund existing already.
Right.
And that's actually a project that is definitely going to take place and happen, so.
So I think our thought was, what, $150,000 in
Paving.
paving.
Yeah.
And then allocate the rest besides what's going into water and sewer. Well, I mean, everything's going to salary basically.
Right.
And then see what our surplus is at the end of the year, which should be the equivalent of our ARPA funds minus $150,000. And then divvy it up at that point into whatever reserve funds we want.
Sounds good, yeah.
And I mean, you could, if you wanted to increase, because I think it was like $10,000, maybe $20,000 only going into the water sewer, you know, for those two salaries. But then you've got like next year, and that's another big thing down there. Things are going to happen and stuff. So, you know, if you ever wanted to put that in there, that become a surplus in that part too. You know, portion of it.
Right.
I just want to make sure if we do a resolution that I have a dollar amount that
Right. And what I, what I really want to do is make sure that we're not in the, in the place where some towns are right now, where they use their ARPA funds to make up budget money and now they're looking at 13, 14, 15% increases
Yeah, that's a, that's not a good way to do business.
So.
Okay, so why don't I take, I'll get the dollar amounts, hash it all out. I can email it to you guys and then you can just vote on it.
That'd be great, I think.
Because that's plenty of time.
I think that's what we should do. Does that work for everybody?
How about the reappraisal? Is that pretty expensive?
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I tried to see what we had in our account for reappraisal and I couldn't put my hands on a number.
It is expensive.
It's expensive. We get money every year from the state.
Right.
Piddling.
It's not much, nope. But we ended up, we thought we were going to spend a lot more of it if the Green Mountain Power thing hadn't gone through. But it did. So I think, from what Lisa was telling me the last
It drained it.
It drained it, yes. But if we're not looking at a reappraisal for another two years, we should be okay.
We should be okay.
But if not, we can use the money from the surplus and put that in a account for it.
I assume this one will come in a little high.
I would imagine.
Yeah.
Just because every town needs one done.
Exactly, yes, they're in.
It's not a buyer's market.
Right. Yes. Unfortunately.
So next meeting, Judy, we'll take a look at that and
Yep.
Excellent.
That's good.
The next item is the town of Proctor warning, reviews and edits. Nothing really controversial on here.
Just a clarification question.
Albert, yes.
You know, where'd that $488,440 figure come from for the highway? You know, and $1,102,065? Because, you know, when you look at our minutes from the December, or the last meeting, I think we came up with a figure of we approved by motion a figure of Yes. You know, when you add these two numbers, they're 1,659,505,00. You know, it's about a $4,378 difference.
Well, I took the bottom line of the general fund budget and then the highway is, doesn't reflect the ARPA funds because it's not part of
Right, right.
the general fund.
But when I look at that last budget, that one we were looking at, the highway came in at 400 Yeah, $480,422.59.
Eight thousand off roughly?
Four thousand.
You said 400? Okay, wait, no, that's the next column over. I got to get back to this. Fiscal year '25 was proposed budget for fiscal year '25 was
For highway?
Was it Department 40? No, I was looking at the budget that we were given at that last meeting.
So maybe we need to go back and look.
Yeah, I'll have to double-check mine then. I'll look at my final line on mine.
Can we hold off on this morning then until next meeting?
Yeah, I'll just work on it. I'll double-check on that one.
Is everybody okay with the other stuff, which would just be taxes and moving the Forest Management Fund to the Town Hall Building Fund?
I am.
I am, yes.
Okay.
Usually you have an article that says other non-binding inform, or discussion information to come before.
Oh, I didn't see it on the others.
Okay. It's been on prior ones.
Because I went and looked at last year's couple of stans, format changed between the two of them over time, but
So that's the only way, like, when the kids stood up and spoke about, like, the fiber or anything like
Internet, yeah.
That's the only thing that allows people to speak to something like that. If you don't want to allow that, that's up to you, but historically, people have an opportunity to speak like that.
So that would be Article eight.
So we want to give them the opportunity, Lisa?
Yes. Yes.
Shut down the people. It wasn't intentional. No. Right. All right.
Okay.
I get this.
All right, so we'll take a look at that at our next meeting improvement. Assessors' final RFP. Assessors' final RFP for reappraisal. I was reading the rest of it, so it was mailed out on one-three, and the bid opening is gonna be one-twenty-two?
Yes, so we, she put the bid opening at January twenty-second at noon, so I'm gonna have to warn that as well, and then, um, if there's a couple board members that might show up at noon that day to open bids with her. I believe her reasoning is she wanted them prior to the meeting that night.
What day is, is that a Monday?
Monday, it's, yeah, same day we have a meeting that night.
Why did she want them previous to the meeting?
I think she wanted to just go over them once they were opened. And then they'll be addressed at the meeting too, with the full board. But if I have, if there's a couple people willing to come down and open the bids, thank you, Albert.
I'm tired, so I'm here, so.
I could probably be there.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that mean Judy buys a lunch out burger?
Not the budget.
All right, anything else for the Assessors' final RFP?
Hey, do a report.
Hey. So the annual report, I just put that out there, because I am working on it, and I've had quite a few reports come in from committees. Um, waiting for the Select Boards' report. Um, and so, um, I'm trying to compile all that and get, um, all that I have so far to them by next week as a initial draft. Um, the ladies downstairs are running all the reports for me, for the delinquent accounts and all that, so all the financial pieces of it, they'll have, I'm just looking for reports. And then we also have to look at, um, the dedication and the cover. And, um, I think it was mentioned once before for the cover, putting the fire department on the cover for their anniversary this year. So I have a whole disk of photos, so I can run and apply to some of you guys. Let's start thinking for dedication too, if you'd like to do a dedication.
Sounds good. All righty, and I'll get a draft of that to you.
Thanks.
This week.
I know, I'm struggling with mine, because I wasn't even here that week.
All right, South Street Sidewalk Project.
Okay, so I reached out to them about moving this along, um, they did send me five different, um, engineer firms that were, um, at the ready, which means that we don't have to kinda go out, like, for an RP, so to speak, and get all their information, compile it, figure out what their good, they've already been approved. I didn't know if you wanted me to go through them all and pick three, and then have the committee grade them, and I attached a sample of a grading sheet for them, um, and then grade those three, or would you want to go through all five of them? Didn't, I just didn't wanna copy every single, um, that, uh, report on them, because some are lengthy, and five of them would be a lot of paper, so.
Three's fine with me, yeah, I mean, it's just a basic sidewalk project, shouldn't be.
Right.
Huge deal.
Albert, were you the other one on the committee?
No, I think Bruce signed up for it.
Bruce?
Did you?
What?
What?
Sidewalk? I can be on it, yes, I mean, if you need someone, yes, I'll be on it.
I thought it was Albert.
I think it's, I have it written on my other agenda, my other book, I think it was, I thought it was.
I thought it was Albert, because he walks it every day. Or five, five days a week, because that's.
So, anyway, so what I'll do is, I'll, I can email that information out, if it's okay electronically, and then, um, if you require hard copies, we can do it, but I'd like to meet sooner rather than later, just to kinda get the ball rolling and.
Good.
Yeah.
Get them on board.
Excellent.
Before it gets too late.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, because, yep.
Yes.
Awesome.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing I asked Judy is, out of three, I don't remember who our engineer was for the, uh, like, ped path through town, but, you know, I'd rather not see their name in.
Oh, this one here that we did.
The Beaver Pond Project.
Oh.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, that was.
It was hard to get information.
Oh, my God, we, I walked that, I think, two or three times with them, and then Mike, and, oh, my God, and.
Yeah.
They blamed, uh, Stan and, uh.
Everybody that they.
Yeah, except themselves.
It was a mess.
Okay.
Yep.
So if there's no other discussion on that, is there a motion to adjourn the Select Board meeting and convene the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Budget.
So I put together the budgets for the water and the sewer, um, I just wanted you guys to look at them as a draft right now, just because I didn't know which way you're leaning with the, um, ARPA funds, and if more was gonna be allocated, because that would adjust them somewhat. So the, um, if you notice, the water was up seven, and the sewer appears to be down three, and part of that is just because of the bonds, different bonds being paid out, and now they're not, um, you know, vice versa, so, um, still gonna see where I can kinda tweak it, because I just don't wanna make, I wanna make sure that their, the budgets are covered enough for those two departments.
The only reason I wouldn't lean towards that is, we have a reserve for water from the watershed and the logging.
Yep.
Um, and we're gonna be getting a bond for sewer, I don't know that we need to worry about stashing money over there. That's just my opinion.
Right, I'm just concerned more with the salaries.
Salaries.
Yeah, it, it, you know, if you wanted to hide some ARPA money there, you know.
Yeah, I'm just, like, like if someone were to leave, and we had to replace them, especially a licensed person.
Yeah, so, we better plan for that, because.
Yeah, whatever you think should go in there, and then next meeting, we'll take a look at it and.
Yeah.
Probably change it, and then we'll.
All right.
They're both licensed now, so.
Right. Yep.
And then, they just gotta pay an increase, but I'll bet there's other towns out there that pay even more than that.
Probably gonna want another one eventually.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't wanna get into the problem that we've been through before.
Right, right.
And the state in here helping us and everything else.
And the hard part about that is you never know if something came up and one did leave, like, most of them now, you know, they're on a single plan, you get somebody who's on a family plan, that just bumps up the cost three times as much, you know, so that's just hard to factor into what, you know, what it's gonna look like down the road. They're doing great right now, so, keep them happy.
So next.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just one question, when I look at this, you know, budget material, take for example the water, page one, when I look at those bottom four items, I see, you know, substantial amounts budgeted for fiscal year twenty-three, like line repair, twenty thousand, the actual was none, which is a good thing, means we didn't have to do any repairs. Does that twenty thousand that wasn't used that year go into a fund as a reserve for that line item, or? You know, and then the, the other three items below it, new equipment, two thousand, none was spent. Uh, tank maintenance and repair, none was spent in twenty twenty-three, is that money treated as a surplus at the end of the year, if there is a surplus, or does it stay in this line?
I don't think it, it's in a reserve fund.
No, it's, it's treated as a surplus, um, some of it might be used to pay other.
Yeah, okay.
Line items.
Line items, um, it would have to be approved in a town meeting for that part of the surplus to be put into a reserve fund in, in the next budget.
Which, which might not be a bad thing to think about in the future.
And in the past, what we've used is just, we've used it to reduce the tax rate, if we have a surplus at the end.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
They go through, like, a lot of chemicals down there and stuff, and testing that stuff.
Well, I see there's many instances here in the two budgets where, you know, something was allocated fiscal year twenty-three, and it wasn't used. None of that was used, and I just didn't know where that went, so you answered my question, thank you.
Good question. Fifty-two Main Street.
Can I just ask you a question? How does a seven percent increase impact the fee, then? That's the one thing I haven't heard anyone discuss.
She hasn't calculated that yet for the tech, for the rate, you mean, water rates, sewer rates?
Right.
She hasn't yet.
We should probably ask her to do that.
Yeah, well, she just, she, she reviewed this with me, you know, to make sure, I was more concerned with, like, the bonds and stuff, to make sure those payments were coming out the right way. So, once she gets that, uh, once she gets the final number, she'll be able to calculate that. Again, making sure it's, you know, seven minus three. I mean, one, if one went up, the other one's gonna be awash, because it's gonna go down, so, you know, it impacts that much, but.
It's never gone, our rate's never gone down, it's held. We, we've had the budget go down in the past, the rate's never gone down, the rate has held.
It's kind of a balance, because one is, it's not like, you know, both are up seven percent.
I don't know, seven percent off, seven percent's a big number, depends on what you're talking about.
It is.
Seven thousand dollars of ARPA would make that zero.
But then it's gotta go up fourteen percent. Two years from now.
Yes.
Maybe that won't be our problem to you. Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Fifty-two Main Street update.
Okay, um, so fifty-two and fifty-six, Main Street, um, what we're doing now is, um, the drafting a letter to them, um, about regarding their appeal and their discrepancy in the water and sewer rates. So I will have a draft of that this week, and then I will share it with all of you, and we will discuss it on the twenty-second, BA. Do you have numbers, so if anybody needs them?
I would like to put in there, you know, question them what their, what their business plan is, you know, what their plans are. But is this the right spot, right time? I'm getting nervous.
Well, I think they need to address the response to the appeal first. I mean, that's the, the guidance, the direction I was given.
All right, let's start.
Because it's, it's big, it's a big number.
What is the number?
Water and sewer's seventeen thousand, taxes fourteen thousand. There was no water and sewer on fifty-six, so, water and sewer's just on fifty-two.
Yeah, um, I'd be interested to find out what, what they're doing in St. Johnsbury, whether that one is the same situation.
Does St. Johnsbury have a town manager? I don't know.
I think.
I mean, they gotta have something.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if it was a mayor or.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Because they were.
They might be big enough to have a mayor.
He was gonna check with them too, so.
Okay.
Judy, would you call them and ask them, you know, just anybody up there?
Right, right, attorney was going to do that, he was gonna check into it.
Yeah, but it might be interesting to see whether it's the same pattern.
So let's continue to follow the guidance we've been given.
I'll do that tomorrow.
Definitely.
With respect to their business plan, don't we have the ability to have insight to that? As a town, we've helped them receive a block grant over there that we are using our town manager to fill out and wait for them, call them, track them down, to be compliant to that. I believe this is the third time, not for them specifically, but for that building over there. Um, pretty big chunks of money. When we had a prior town manager here, the reason we don't apply for it for anything else in town is because we've spent all our time over on that building. So why wouldn't this town be, um, and I guessing this is an attorney question, since everything's going through the attorney, but why wouldn't we be due that information? It's not a small amount of money, and it's my understanding that that was part of the process of what they were supposed to be doing, which seems slightly backwards, that you buy property and then decide what your business plan is going to be, but it is the state of Vermont, so sometimes I'm not surprised.
Yeah, and all that documentation is part of the grant, and gone through years, through them uploading and stuff. And it was basically, a lot of it was, I think, to create a feasibility study and, you know, the plan and stuff.
And has that been created, the feasibility study?
All, all the things, all the documents they've requested up until October have been submitted. Their next review through the state is not until April of twenty twenty-four.
So they've never created a feasibility study that they've submitted?
They've, they've had financial, it's mostly financials and, um, that they've submitted in documentation and reports and stuff for people going.
So the next report would be April, then?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, but I'd just hate to get stuck for these grants, I think.
Have they even been awarded the grant yet?
Well, we, yeah, we, but we got the grant, they don't have the monies yet.
Right.
Yeah.
But I mean, there must be administrative dollars being spent on it, I mean, state of Vermont.
Yes, and that wasn't part of the grant at first, unless we decided to have it part of the grant. Phil and Charlotte are in there, they're joined.
So is that part of the grant now, then, that you're being compensated for your time spent on their reporting?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, I had that in there.
Okay. Anything else on this?
Just getting a little nervous.
Yes.
Any other business for the Board of Water Commissioners? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Water Commissioners and convene the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
Removed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Board of Sewer Commissioners, budget, kind of already covered that.
Nothing new to add, then, again, the Zion with the budget, with the sewer and water.
Any other business for the Board of Sewer Commissioners? Is there a, uh, motion to reconvene the regular Select Board meeting and adjourn the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Department reports, Sheriff's report.
Um, Judy, I don't recall, what does the sheriff bill us a year now for his contract? Off the top of your head?
I wanna say ninety-three thousand?
Is it this year and for next year?
For current. Ninety-three thousand roughly.
Yeah, I think.
I think for the, for what I put into the budget was a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was over a hundred.
Yeah.
This is a good deal, no matter how you look at it.
And I did contact them about the, um, report, because there's a lot of gaps in here, a lot of days missing. Um, they had three officers out with COVID.
So we didn't get billed for forty hours, then?
Right.
Okay, good.
Thirty-four and a quarter, to be exact.
I'd be curious to see, uh, Pittsburgh's final numbers there, you know, I assume these were their final numbers, but.
I'm sure there'll be a little difference once they.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, they probably didn't spend a lot of time on this.
Yep.
But if West Rowland's interested, then, that's.
Yeah, because that was actually their question too, what if Proctor's not interested, do we have to bail?
They seem dumb home.
Yeah, they, you know, we, uh, we did work with them five years ago.
Yeah, something like, yeah.
They, the, the, the number was
much higher.
Much higher.
Yes.
Out of sight.
Yeah.
Wasn't even close.
No, I think they.
So that's good.
Come up with a some different numbers that are more.
Realistic.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, I suppose it was being done before, we just didn't see it, they document a lot more, uh, you know, mid-tour downloading cruiser and body cameras, uh,
That's kinda why I wanted to see their report, to see what.
Yeah.
Sure it's not gonna be saying that stuff.
Yeah, I know.
Well, the sheriff didn't used to say that, and but I assume we got charged for it anyway, but just when you see so much end-of-shift paperwork, uh, you know, an hour. Yep.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be, I think we'd be crazy.
Yeah, it'd be, I think we'd be crazy if we didn't ask for something like that. I think that was a great thing to.
I also like that we would have a say on the schedule like that.
Yeah.
To me, that's a, a huge, huge benefit.
Right.
And again, I don't want to tell them how to do their job, but there are some times where it would be, you know, noon on Sunday is not high-traffic time.
Yep.
Move on to the town managers' report.
Okay, under the highway, guys picking up Christmas trees. They're taking the Christmas tree decorations down this week. So those will be all down. I emailed both DeFrain and DeBoyan King as a follow-up to my 1218 email about the South Street project, which I mentioned before. So this was just kind of a duplicate going over that, about picking out three out of the top five. And some I'm kind of familiar with because we use them for the tri-town bike path, these engineering firms, so I'm familiar with.
Yeah, that was.
A lot of their reviews.
DeFrain.
Trees Inc. should be taking the trees down South Street either tomorrow or Wednesday. Hopefully before the wind comes.
Yeah.
They might go help chase the trees down, I don't know.
Does, is Kyle been taking any of that wood, just curious?
Uh, they asked me if anybody wanted the wood chips. I don't know if we could use wood chips. I mean, it's, I don't know if they'd burn.
They produce some logs there.
I don't know if they'd burn pine in the.
Well, yeah, I, I didn't, that's why I was.
Yeah.
Did he consider, it's not white pine, is it worth, worth good pine?
Yeah, probably.
I mean, there's a lot of wood there.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
But, well, would you just run it by Kyle?
Yeah.
Please.
All right, water sewer budgets we talked about. Two sixty, 2651 West Street, again, waiting for the person it was referred to to get back to me and tell me what their next steps are. So I have a feeling that probably he's just going to sit there like it is still, somebody goes in there and takes care of it. And I don't think it's going to be them. Finalizing changeover phone carriers, I accidentally put that down twice. I actually met with Bob Ferguson today and he's going to, I asked him if he'd do an Excel spreadsheet for me because it's kind of, the narrative he did was hard for me to kind of, you know, do checks and balances and see what the savings is. But either way, it looks like we'll be saving, could be saving $7,500 a year on phones. What they're trying to do is we'd all get brand-new phones. He's looking to have the phone number here, the 4593333, and if you want the garage, it's extension, whatever. Things, so that would, you know, save on that. We'll still be billed for consolidated because of the internet, he said in the DSL, which is one thing I wanted him to explain to me how that works. I said, I don't want to be paying consolidated still and then going with you and paying you unless it's just for those three internet lines. Because then it's not different. We need the DSL in our top phone lines.
Right.
So, but it definitely looks like a cost savings. To get out of the contract that we have currently with consolidated, we may have to pay, it looks like we're in the second year, so the contract says you have to pay $100 per line. And they have us down for 11 lines and then three internet lines, so you're talking like $1,400. But even that, on top of what we look like we'd be saving, we'd still be saving $5,000. And then more going forward. But all the phones at least would be updated, you'd have caller ID, you know, they, they'd work. Our phones don't work. We have people call us all the time and they say, call me back, and then they don't know, we can't see their number, so we don't, so.
Yep.
So I'll let you know for a final number, but that would be good if we could do that. I have a RINK meeting scheduled tomorrow or Wednesday to discuss opening and events that they have going on. I don't know if you saw on Facebook that they were trying to make ice and it kept melting even though, like I said to Brian, I said, I just don't know how this is happening. I don't know how it's 25 degrees and ice melts. I don't, I don't know.
Well, we ran it off frozen.
I think the worst thing we ever did was put the pavement down, so. That should never have been put down. But if we rip that up, then they can't roller skate, so. So, but we'll have that meeting. There's upcoming trainings I'm going to for town meeting warning and model articles, so I'll be more educated tomorrow on that, if I could pick apart anything. On the 17th, there's a town meeting, Australian ballot voting webinar. And then on the 18th, a Vermont voluntary paid family and medical leave insurance webinar. So I'm doing all those, they're all through the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns. Because they all, obviously, the last one could impact us now because everybody who, you know, has even few employees can participate in that, so. And what that looks like is first cost. I had a lot of calls about garbage and recyclables, missed the week of December 26th. Actually called them, I think, four times because they came back the next day, still didn't pick up the people. So they finally, I think, got everybody, but I think between Celia and I, we made four phone calls to them about. And it wasn't like, it wasn't just one specific area, it was all over the town, like sporadic, so.
When they come the next day, Judy, how do they do their billing? Where they come with an empty truck and still weigh it like they would normally do on a Wednesday?
Yeah, I don't think they charge us extra. I haven't ever seen, oh, and a bill like shot out like came back next day. It's always that one specific day. Yeah. So. I think he even got frustrated by the end, I guess, the way he was missing streets, but, oh, well. Also called Green Mountain Power, but a light pole out on Center Street, they were looking into that to fix that. Called Jim Mayette regarding the roof on the town office building because the slate's falling off. So he finally came Saturday, took a look at it, gave me an estimate of $2,100 to fix it. Replace the slate that are up there and do the repairs because he said where there's a lot of slates missing that he was afraid water would get underneath and then. So I didn't think that was a bad price for.
Is he insured?
Yes, he's a contractor.
Okay. When can he do that, Judy?
He wanted half the money upfront, which we did this week, we mailed, or actually last week. So he hopefully will be contacting me to set up a date to come up and do that.
Good.
I also signed off on the contract agreement with Santec for the tri-town bike path. And there's going to be a kickoff meeting scheduled once Pittsburgh and West Rattlin have also signed up on that. Last thing, these are things I added after because they happen after the fact. Spoke with a forester, going to schedule one to three contractors to meet up at the property in Chittenden to get an idea about availability onto the land and what's due to be harvested. And he said if we're on schedule this year to be harvested and we're not, he said, it's not a big deal, you can wait a year out. But he did explain, I think I did last time to you guys, about the difficulty in getting contractors out there, that he's doing a lot of subcontracting. But I already have one person on board to go up and he prefers to have at least two more just to meet with them individually, just to go over it and get an idea about them.
Good. Any questions for the town managers' report? Any other business? Now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Emailed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. We're adjourned.